Just a little update about our community focus for our worship this year. A brief history, so Green Street has been doing worship on the Plaza during Sunday of Summerfest for about 15 years before I was pastor. But when I started as pastor, which is now over nine years ago, this is my ninth Summerfest worship, I wanted to turn it into a community worship event with a community focus, so I started inviting other churches to participate. And this year, we now have eight different churches who are supplying pastors and musicians, et cetera, so it's truly a community worship service. It's a cool event. But we also have a community focus for the offerings, so everything is free. So Green Street provides all the food, the free concessions during worship from 9:30 to 11:00, and then we have a free cookout for the community of hamburgers, et cetera. It's all free, but anybody who wants to contribute a donation, that goes this year to our food pantry. And the food pantry is a community ministry as well, supported by most of the churches participating in worship, along with many other community groups like the Community Foundation and Berry County Cares, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's where all of the donations will go this year to support the food pantry. So I'm coming here today mostly just to inform you, first of all, about what we do during worship. This is not a Green Street worship, this is a community worship. I encourage you to come. If you're members of your church or pastors that want to be part of this, I would love to have them. If members of the council wanted to be part of this and come up and say a good word about some of the things we need in this community relative to food, I would love to include that as well. So I just ask for your support.
Hey, that's one of the things going on. So do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve the request from the Summerfest Committee?
I'll make that motion. I'll support it.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Deveroy, to approve Hasting Summerfest Committee's request to hold annual Summerfest celebration on August 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 2025 at various locations as requested, and adopt Resolution 2025-22 to state the necessary ordinances. We have a motion and a support. Any further comments? Roll call.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Uh, next item, consider approval of Dale Boulder as officer delegate and Dan King as alternate delegate to the Michigan Employees Retirement System, MERS Annual Conference, October 16th through 17th, 2025. Is there your motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Barlow, to approve of Dale Boulder as officer delegate and Dan King as alternate delegate to the Michigan Employees Retirement System, MERS Annual Conference, October 16th through 17th, 2025. Any questions? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Uh, next item up is a fun item. Uh, consider approval of, under direction of staff, the request from the Berry River Bay to conduct their Fall Fondue Fundraiser Cycling Event with staging in Fish Hatchery Park on Sunday, October 12th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
I'll make that motion to approve the Fall Fondue Fundraising Cycling Event under the direction of staff.
Okay, do I hear a support?
Support.
Motion by McLean, supported by Deveroy, to approve the application, the request. Any comments?
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
I noticed on the diagram it said something about porta-pots, but will the new bathroom also be available for them, or just the?
It may be winterized by that time, because it's in October. But the restroom should be open here in a couple weeks. Keep your fingers crossed.
Open as long enough as possible.
Right.
And that's normally what they do. When they have a large event like that, they'd rather bring in porta-pots so it doesn't overload our system.
Oh, that's what I would.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Roll call.
Rocha.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Uh, next item, item D, consider authorization of the purchase of 87 Dell monitors in the amount of $12,750.72.
I'll make that motion, sir.
I'll support it.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Brem, to authorize the purchase of 87 Dell monitors in the amount of $12,750.72. Questions? Go ahead, John.
All right, so I'm absolutely okay with this. I know it's a budgeted item, but I just want to go, kind of go back to when we were discussing budgeted items. Just for the council and everybody else's understanding, we charge our businesses $27,000 a year for pavement. I would love to see that on the budget. It's a budgeted item, so we're not charging our businesses and giving something back to our businesses. I know we've got a little bit of wiggle room in there to do that. Um, yeah, obviously, we've already done that. Um, this year, we've already paid that out, but I would love to be able to take that away from the businesses and have the city take care of that for it. Just my two cents.
I gotta have you explain to me what you're talking about.
So it's, it's, so it's the parking lot agreement, where the businesses pay a certain amount based off of, it's part of the parking lot repavement and upkeep for the, for the city's parking lots?
I know what you're talking about there, but what's that got to do with the computer monitors?
I'm just putting it out there. Um, just putting out there's a statement, since we're paying $12,000 for computers, I think $27,000 given back to the businesses is something that would be warranted for next budget.
See, that's, that's an item we've already talked about, it's an item we've already approved for the special assessment, so it's kind of a mute item. I suggest next year, when we're in the budget again, we readdress that.
Amen.
But, uh, yeah. Any other comments? Terry?
We're buying 24-inch monitors for $12.7, and we could save $3,000. This is from the Dell website. 22-inch monitors for $3,000 less. Uh, 21-inch monitors for almost five grand less. I'm concerned about storing 87 monitors. I know they wouldn't all be used at the same time, however, we would get them, and as soon as we get them, their warranty starts in effect, and if we store them, the warranty is being used for unused monitors. Uh, this is from the Dell website. They would take up enough room that it's almost the size of a Mini Cooper. I would like to see that if we, I know we need monitors because the monitors we have are wearing out. I don't think we need 24-inch monitors, 22-inch monitors, and it's measured diagonally. So you're talking less than one inch on each side, smaller. And we save a lot of money doing it that way, and I wouldn't buy all 87 at once. I would buy enough to replace the broken monitors and enough to have a stock, because monitors, monitors don't go out every week. They go out maybe one a month, two a month, I don't know. But if we ordered 10, and then when our stock got down to two, we reordered 10, the bill would be eight or $900, which wouldn't require a city council, am I correct? $800?
Purchases that are under $5,000 don't require approval.
So the city council wouldn't even have to be involved with, we have to worry about feeding and housing people. I don't think monitors should be our business. I think that should be the IT world. That'd be like, in my opinion, the CEO worrying if I'm ordering, uh, small amounts of chemicals, so.
Well, but that's what you're doing now. Um, so to be clear, these 87 monitors are being immediately deployed. There's only maybe five of these are extras.
Oh, really?
Correct.
I, I, when I read through the paperwork, I, I saw, I saw that it read that some of the mon, so there are some monitors that are broke. I didn't realize all, or 82 of the 87 were being used.
Correct, yep. So this is a replacement of the monitors that are out there. We had some backup monitors and some that we, either were at workstations that were not used as frequently. We've already recycled those through the system. So right now, if any monitor goes out, which they are at a more frequent rate, we don't have anything to replace them with, so we want to refresh all of the monitors. Most workstations have two monitors. So this is for use now. We're not storing a bunch of monitors.
Okay, we're using double monitors, they really want 24-inches, not 20-inches?
That's what we currently have.
Seems, it seems excessive. I'm, this is my opinion.
Any other questions?
I use dual 20s.
Well done.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I got a question. What do we do with the old ones?
We'll recycle them.
I mean, are they functional?
Um, they are, but they're losing functionality, so, I mean, we could try to sell them to someone who can.
I wasn't thinking about selling them, I was thinking about donating to like a school program or something.
Uh, I wouldn't feel confident that they'd last a significantly enough long time to fulfill a need like that.
Gotcha.
They'll probably just be recycled.
Seems like such a waste.
Gentlemen, you want to share something down there?
No, just showing where I got my numbers.
Actually, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, to go ahead and adjust those monitors for 21-inch monitors that would save some additional.
We already have a motion and a support.
And I would like to go ahead and amend that motion.
Well, we're gonna vote on this one first.
The amendments, the amendment has to go through first, you have to vote down the amendment first, according to Robert's rules.
We'll do that then. We have an amendment to the motion, do you use 21 inches, is that what you said, John?
Yeah, saving for over $5,000 to the.
Do we have a support?
I, I, I support that as well.
Okay, we have a motion and support to amend the motion to use 21-inch monitors. Roll call.
Rezegi.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
No.
McLean.
No.
Bergeron.
No.
Deveroy.
No.
Rocha.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tassiba.
No.
Six voting no, one, two, three voting yes. The motion does not pass.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Barlow, supported by Brem, to authorize the purchase of 87 Dell monitors in the amount of $12,750.72. Any further comments?
We have a place to store them, correct?
Should we use them?
They, they're going to be used.
Immediately, yeah.
We're taking out what's existing in the workstations and replacing them with these. There will be maybe five or six extras.
That was my other note on here.
No further comment? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
No.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rocha.
No.
Tassiba.
Yes.
Two no votes. Six yes votes. The motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for the debate.
That was kind of fun, wasn't it?
Someone's got to do it, Your Honor, now and then.
It's exciting, it's exciting.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, next item, 10E, consider approval of Murray's asphalt to do repairs on multiple major streets in the amount of $58,984. Is there your motion?
You make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Brem, supported by Deveroy, to approve Murray's asphalt to do repairs on multiple major streets in the amount of $58,984. Questions?
I had one. I did not see LT's quote. I see Murray's.
It's an email.
Yeah, it was written there.
Oh, 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 I got you, I got it.
So they only provided an email.
All right, I had it, I, I, I was looking for a quote and it was just an email. I got you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Item 12F, consider approval of Murray's asphalt for patching lead service line pavement cuts in the amount of $8,312.
I'll make the motion to approve Murray's asphalt for patching lead line services for $8,312.
Motion by McLean, do I hear support?
Support.
Supported by Deveroy, uh, to, to approve Murray's asphalt quote of $8,312. Questions? Roll call.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Uh, item G, consider scheduling a public hearing for Monday, August 25th, 2025, to allow residents to comment on proposed activities included with a homeowner's rehab grant application to the state of Michigan. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion by Brem, supported by McLean, uh, to schedule a public hearing for Monday, August 25th, 2025, to allow residents to comment on proposed activities included with a homeowner's rehab grant application to the state of Michigan. Comments? Questions? Go ahead, Terry.
Uh, can we have a time included on that motion, Your Honor? Monday at 6:00 PM?
Nope, I, I think it was meant to be at 7 o'clock, Dan.
Correct.
During the regular council meeting.
All right.
Public hearing. So, put that down. Consider scheduling a public hearing for 7 o'clock on Monday, August 25th, 2025, to allow residents to comment on proposed activities included with a homeowner's rehab grant application to the state of Michigan. We have a motion and support. Any further comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
So that people can comment on where they think this money should go? It's a grant that, that you've obtained through the city?
Um, Dan's been working on it.
Dan's been working on it.
Yep, it's a requirement of all community development block grant funding projects, um, so it's very open to whatever the public wants to comment on regarding the program, be it, uh, strategies for implementation or, or comments on the specific areas it's going to be used. It's, it's very broadly, um, available for comments to make, uh, I'm sorry, for residents to make comments on.
Does that suffice?
Yeah.
Dan, is this the same program the county's working on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions? Roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Tassiba.
Yes. Item M, consider approving and authorize the clerk and the mayor to sign the independent public officials contract for construction code administration and enforcement with professional code inspectors. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll support.
Oh, I have discussion.
Just a second, just a second, just a second. Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to consider approving and authorizing the clerk and the mayor to sign the independent public officials contract for construction code administration and enforcement with professional code inspector, PCI. Any questions? Comments?
Yes, yes. Um, in the interest of our community members and the people that we represent, I am quite concerned because of the fact, um, based on my recent interaction with PCI. Not knowing I was a city councilman, um, there was some red flags that went up. So, and I'm going to guess that based on the experience that I had, that there's others in our community who have also had the same experience. So, I called and asked Sarah if I could see the contract, which I did not know that it was a running contract, so it's every three years is what they do?
Um, it's two years upfront, but then it auto-renews every year.
Okay. So some of the things that, um, raised a red flag for me is the ease of working with them. They don't accept a credit card, you have to pay cash or a check. Um, apparently, someone has to be there that can authorize the permit, or you, you can't even pay. Um, Sarah did indicate, you know, that she hasn't had a lot of complaints about PCI, but I think there is a lack of understanding and knowledge to our community that we contract with PCI. So when there's a problem, it's probably not going to come to us because they don't make that equation that we contract with them. So, that being said, I would love it if whoever made the motion could amend that emotion, or amend that motion to maybe, um, consider our choices in the next year and only renew it for a one-year contract, so that we can, or that staff can do some investigating about what our other options are, or to, um, review the contract again with them, because as far as I'm concerned, there needs to be a level of customer service for them and for our constituents, and I don't believe that is happening. So, based on my experiences elsewhere, um, I think it would be advantageous of us as a council to have staff do their research and homework about what our other options are and present that to us, so that next year, when that contract becomes renewable again, we know what our choices are. In the same breath, just because we've always done something doesn't mean we should continue to keep doing it. Because sometimes people get comfortable in what they're doing and their level of service goes down. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, on the point you brought up, the only motion that was made was authorizing Mayor Tassiba and Linda to sign. And if I understand correctly, if I read that motion correctly, it's just giving them the authorization to sign.
Right, I get, I understand where you're coming from.
All right, that's the only thing I was making the motion on, not for anything about to do with the contract.
Right, but that was my, because of the fact that I wanted to see the contract and I, there really.
That's a great idea, for you to see the contract if you have to deal with it. I, I would want to see it as well.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. But Sarah informed me that it was a three-year contract, so I'm hoping that it can be a one-year contract, but I don't know how that goes in this motion because of what we're voting on.
So, um, let me double-check this real quick. I think it's a two-year contract, but then it auto-renews for one-year periods, if I remember correctly.
And I just want to make a comment.
Yes, so it's always in play unless there's advance notice of termination 60 days in advance. So if that's something that you're concerned about, you want to look into other options, my suggestion would be that we either modify this to, instead of being a 24-month period and then have one-year auto-renews, have it be a 12-month period with one-year auto-renews. Um, then maybe in the spring, I'll make a note in my calendar to do this, we'll look at different options, and then you'll have time to consider that well in advance of the 60-day termination period for the notice. Um, it, it's gonna take a little bit of legwork, so it's certainly not something that we're gonna try to do before something like this gets approved.
Right.
We, we need this updated with the names of the new officials and those things, and we do want to do the auto-renew because it's important that something is always in place. We don't want someone to forget something and then all of a sudden, we don't have a building official anymore. So that would be my recommendation, if that's something that you guys want to look at, is to modify, um, section 12 there to make it from 24 months to 12 months and then just the one-year renew period.
And that contract renews June 30th?
Um, it will renew, well, we're, we're restarting it now, so it'll be August 11th to August 11th.
So I guess, do, do you need like our consensus to do that, or do you need that included in the motion?
I need that included in the motion because it's different from what's being presented as the contract terms. So it could be.
To change the time from three, it's two?
From 24 months to 12 months in section 12.
And we can, we have a chance to review it.
Okay, I, can I do that?
Sure you can.
I would, I'd like to modify my motion to reflect as such.
You gotta say that.
Because I'm not saying. To reflect from 12 month, from three, 36 months to.
24.
24.
From 24 to 12 months.
One year.
And with the auto-renew.
With the auto-renew.
And I thought I was just authorizing you and her to sign.
Well, you authorized us to sign this, and that was one of the stipulations in this agreement.
Right, that's why I had called and asked to see it, but she said that to me over the phone.
It's different than how you guys were reading it, that's fine, but, yes, I will modify my motion to reflect from 24 months to 12 months.
And, and just another tidbit of information to go with that, it was my husband, um, that went in to pay and took time off work, and they told him he couldn't, so. And they were not very nice to him.
Okay, we have a motion by Stensel Barton to modify his, uh, original motion. Did you support that modification? Modified by Brem.
You have a question?
Go ahead.
Can he, uh, John has a question.
I have a comment. I, I can go with the one-year contract and agree with you, but I myself have had problems with PCI, and I've had a lot of complaints from residents about PCI. I've brought the complaints to Dan King and I've talked to the mayor about it recently. Just letting you know that there are complaints out there. Citizens just haven't come forward to us.
Yeah, because I don't think they understand the relationship.
Right.
Okay, we have, uh, we have a motion to. Okay, we have, uh, we have a motion to, uh, to approve, uh, the clerk and the mayor to sign the independent public officials' contract for construction code administration and enforcement with PCI, uh, and, and the term reflective on this agreement is 12 months with a one-year renewal. Is that what we want to say on that, Sarah?
Yep, that's fine.
Is everybody in agreement with that? Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
No.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, item A, consider approval under direction of staff, Berry County Great Start Collaborative to conduct a stroll and read event, uh, in Titan Park from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM Thursday, August 14th, 2025.
I'll make the motion, sir. I'll support.
Okay, a motion by Barlow, supported by Rocha, to approve their request. Go ahead, tell us what you're doing.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Leanne Miller-Buss, and I'm the director of the Berry Great Start Collaborative, and I just came to ask permission to use the park for our event, and I was wondering if you'd like to hear a little bit about it before you vote.
Sure.
Um, so, the Berry Great Start Collaborative is a state-funded program, funded through the ISD, and we are tasked with supporting infant and maternal health, making sure that kids are ready to enter kindergarten, and that kids are proficient in literacy by third grade. So, this event supports two of those tasks by, we're offering literacy information to parents. We find if we just say we're having a literacy education night that no one shows. So, we kind of trick families by having a fun night with ice cream and foam, and then we get a large attendance, and then we have all kinds of information about how to read with your children to support literacy. We're offering free books for every family that comes. Every child gets a free book, and then we support, we'll have our staff there to help families know how to read to their children and how to increase literacy in the home. Um, we are very intentional about using local vendors, so we have, um, Muvil offering free ice cream, and we have Stormy the Magician doing the foam. Um, our event is from 3:00 to 5:00 at, usually, we'd like to use Fish Hatchery Park, but the water is not available, so we would like to use Titan Park and have it up near the new playground and have, um, Stormy hook in right there for the water, and then, um, local preschools are going to be there. Um, we have Noah's Ark, St. Rose, um, GSRP. I think somebody from the circus is coming. We have Early On and Berry Community Mental Health there to offer support for families and get them enrolled in school. Um, so, we're just asking for permission to use the park at that time.
Any questions?
How many years have you been doing this?
Um, we offered smaller versions at, um, Fish Hatchery the past two years in, um, association with Family Support Center. They did it the first year, and then we took it over, but this would be the first year with Muvil and Stormy at Titan Park.
Any other questions?
How, how is it funded for you to give the books away?
Um, we are part of the 32P block grant from the state of Michigan, and our fiduciary is the ISD. But we specifically got additional funding. We have $54,000 just to give out books in Berry County. So, that's a lot of books. So, we've been doing literacy nights at all the elementaries and all the preschools, and then, um, supporting local preschools and daycares by supplying them a home literacy, um, kit, and then, um, we have, still have so many books left over that we want to make sure that, and we also do the little free libraries around Berry County, so we support those with the book funding as well.
Any other questions? Okay.
When does school start?
Couple of weeks.
18th.
The 18th.
So, after this date?
No, yes, so we wanted to do the last Friday before school started for like end of summer celebration.
Okay, we have a motion by Barlow, supported by Brem. Is that correct?
Yeah.
To approve, under direction of staff, Berry County Great Start Collaborative to conduct a stroll and read event in Tide Park from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Thursday, August 14th, 2025. Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, staff presentation and apology discussions, we have none, city manager report.
Um, so, a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. MDOT, uh, you may be aware, is planning to reconstruct State Street from Cook to Broadway in 2028. Um, so, they are in the very early stages of planning. Um, we are, um, we've made some communications with a consulting company that's going to be bidding on the project. They were facilitating a meeting between ourselves and MDOT about what some of our priorities are to see if that can be implemented in the design. Um, while working on this process, we consulted the master plan and tried to look at some previous, uh, planning processes that we'd had, and there really wasn't a lot about that corridor. Um, and I think a lot of that is because it is an MDOT road. It's not directly within our jurisdiction, so there's a lot of times that it feels like we don't have a lot of control over what happens there. The consultant, um, is going to meet with us here in the next week or two to work out a, a plan and a proposal for how to evaluate what it is that the city's goals can be there and coordinate that with MDOT, keep them along in the entirety of the process so that we're not going way outside something that they could potentially approve. But this road's probably going to look the way it is when it's newly constructed for another 50 years. So, um, if we can get some of our goals and objectives and some of our, our trouble points fixed as a result of this, I think that's definitely worth it. So, probably at the next meeting or the one following that, um, there will be a proposal for you to review to engage in that planning process. Also, wanted to reiterate, as you're aware by now, um, Mercy is likely to not be able to fulfill the, uh, terms of their contract with us through the end of, uh, 2026, which is what we had agreed to. They've experienced some unexpected setbacks, um, and they don't believe that they're going to be able to continue to operate, uh, here in the Hastings service area. They are presently working on a transition, uh, with Life EMS that is ongoing. Our attorney has reviewed a memorandum of understanding that, uh, Life EMS had proposed there were some modifications that she felt needed to be made to it, which is why it's not presented, uh, for you, uh, this evening, but that will be available at the next meeting. Uh, Life EMS will be, uh, presenting to the Birch, um, team there on Thursday at their regular meeting just to help answer some questions with the supervisors and Birch representatives to get everybody on board about what the transition means and what it doesn't mean. So, uh, if you have questions in the meantime, I'll be putting out information, uh, to you, so please keep an eye on your email. If you have any questions about anything that comes up between, um, those emails and the council meeting, um, please let me know so we can get answers for you in advance of that meeting. Um, other than that, I, if somebody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions, Sarah?
Yes, 2028 for Cook to Broadway, is that?
Yes.
Sorry, any way to move that up, because it seems like, that, that road, I don't think it was going to exist in three years, the way, the way it is right now.
And they don't usually get moved up. I've seen them go the other way plenty of times, but I've, I've never seen one get moved up.
Are those, are those orange state flowers going to stay there on the side of the roadway the entire three years, or is that, is that for, uh?
I think those are there because of the surveyor.
Survey.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, so, they've, they've been there for a bit, but I don't anticipate any real closures as a result of that activity at this point.
Any, any other questions? So, that invitation, uh, to have that meeting with that contractor, is Dale involved in that?
Um, I sent him the invite.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure. Don't want to leave him out on any traffic issues. Okay, is that it? Thank you. Uh, also in your packet, you have, uh, Fire Chief Jordan's monthly report. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
I do. So, just a couple of highlights in the report. I want to really talk about the, um, our paid-on-call staff and full-time staff. We've been extremely busy. 125 calls in the month of July is, is a large number for a partially paid-on-call department. We, the, the increase in the calls is, um, going up every month. I, and I fully anticipate our annual total from 2024 to hit it this month. So, we'll have exceeded our total, total runs for 2024. We'll exceed that at the end of this month in August. So, just very busy. One thing I want to bring up to on, on, uh, July 3rd, day before, thanks, uh, day before, um, July 4th, of course. In, in the morning, we had a, 1:00 AM in the morning, we had a, a structured fire in town. Not a full, not fully involved, but rooms and content, but it still takes up a lot of time. While we were still on that call, we received a second fully-involved structured fire less than a mile away. And that is a very rare event for a department of this size to have two structured fires that large going on. So, our, our staff ended up working pretty much the entire night, and along with the, along with us full-time and the paid-on-call, we all still went to work the next day. My, a couple of my full-time, well, one of my full-time guys worked a total of 18 hours that day. So, we had some long, long days and long hours, and I, the, the staff certainly need, um, the, the credit when you see them. Make sure we, we thank them for the amount of time they're putting in, into the, for the community. Also, I'm going to remind you, this meeting, we have, on the 23rd of August, we'll be doing the pancake breakfast again, so we'd like to see everybody there.
August 23rd, pancake breakfast.
Yep.
So, I always used to work, I always used to ask Roger Curris, when they had the pancake breakfast, "Are you cooking?"
I'll be, I'll be watching.
Roger used to say, "You don't want me to cook."
Yeah, then as I reported on the last one, we did get the, um, we've been working on the new, on the backup ambulance, so we have that, it's in service today. It went in service this morning. It will actually have its full first day tomorrow is when we'll be, it'll be available through dispatch. And so, that is there. That really has nothing to do with what's going on with Mercy. That is there as a backup unit for if there's no ambulances for our residents, we can use ours to get, to get us there a little bit quicker if we need to transport them.
Questions, anyone?
You're doing a smash-up job.
Thank you.
What are knockboxes?
Knockboxes.
Knockboxes?
They are, uh, remote access, so they are, what it is, it's a, it's a, it's a single box, it's a, it's a box that we require to be installed in anywhere in the city that has an alarm, has a fire alarm, fire suppression, or an elevator. And what that does, that, so that's, that's a way that we can be notified that some is, something's going on in that building, but we don't have access to the building. So, the knockbox, we place the keys for that building inside that knockbox, and then the fire department have a single key that gets us into any location.
That's interesting. I did not know that.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's busting down your $5,000 door.
Yeah. Right, or if you get stuck in the elevator.
Correct. We, we do use, and, and just a comment there, when we, when I, in July of '23, we had 39 boxes, we now have 115.
Oh, good, that's great.
So, we're really pushing.
And then, for the, um, for the, did you ever finish the investigation on those two structured, was that arson, or was that just happened to be chance? Do you know anything?
We just all, we decided to have two cooking incidents at the same night, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we did investigate those when they were both cooking.
What is the training of the people that will be, will be manning the ambulance?
So, we've, apart from three people, everybody on, all, all, all the medical staff are now EMTs.
They're all the EMTs?
Correct.
Everyone?
Apart from three people, and we're working on that to, to move those, those three folks up to EMTs this year, yeah.
Yep, you're doing a great job, Chief.
I appreciate it.
Actually, your guys are doing a great job.
They are, that's right.
I'm sure you are too, don't get me wrong. Your guys are really. I've dealt with that.
Uh, thanks, Mark. Also in your packet, you have, uh, Library Director Edelman's monthly report. Anything to add, Dave?
No, sir.
Any questions of, uh, Library Director? How'd you ever come out on your window slam? Uh, you had all new windows put in, you had problems with them, is it all fixed?
No.
It is not. We are still working through that with the window installer, and the city attorney is helping us.
Okay. It's the only question I got. Question? Go ahead.
What we talked about before, the air conditioning, because the library, it, they're, yeah. Could you explain to everyone you explained to me here about the air conditioning?
So, the server room at the library, it, it was a large closet essentially, where we hold, hold all the servers that run the building. The wall-mounted air conditioning unit that's in that building, or that room, excuse me, to my knowledge is original, so it would have been put in in roughly 2007. Appears to be failing. There's a leak that's been identified at the head unit, and my understanding from my HVAC company is that it's not something that can be fixed, so the intent is to then replace it. So, the head unit has to be replaced, and then the, the unit that goes up on the roof, it's all a package essentially. So, we discussed that at the last board meeting, and that will be replaced. It's roughly $5,400 all in.
I just thought everybody should know that that was all about.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Uh, in your packet, item A, Hastings Public Library Board of Trustees draft minutes from August 4th, 2025. I hear a motion to accept and place that item on file.
I'll make the motion to place that on file, Your Honor.
I support.
Okay, a motion by Stencil Barton, supported by Devroy, uh, to place item A, Hastings Public Library Board of Trustees draft minutes from the August 4th, 2025 meeting, uh, place on, accept and place on file. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Public comment? Gary's been waiting all meetings, all.
Oh, you know. How you doing, Eric? Gary White. Uh, wants over needs. Uh, Health Department, last month, I don't know if anybody know, they're actually going to be hiring a new health officer. It's been long coming, well, long needed. Uh, they also lost an environment, they're going to lose their environmental officer at the end of this month and stuff. Uh, and on the way out though, but they did raise fees. That was not reported here, was it? So, your Health Department, you know, is, is raising fees. They had a 30% surplus from last year, 40% surplus from a couple of years ago and stuff. They did not need these fees. I talked to one commissioner afterwards, he said, "I didn't know they had that much money, I wasn't privy to that information," because you didn't ask. Congratulations, sir. You did your homework on those monitors. You actually brought in some information, and I've been reading, I've been sitting back there looking at that monitor over there, reading it. The 20 or 21-inch would have been just fine and saved yourselves taxpayer dollars and stuff. When you look at the Health Department, they're reducing, right? But yet, the county wants to continue. I go around, I think I've been to 14 townships and all but one, uh, village, uh, giving county reports. They want to reopen the front of the court building, correct? As they have more openings and vacant offices in the Health Department over here, right? The Health Officer, if you go and look at the application, is going to serve their office, main office, and their office is over in Eaton County. We need to separate. You folks need to be a voice for that separation. You need to understand that because we're not getting our money's worth out of it. PCI. PCI only does what government tells them they have to do. PCI, PCI only does what government tells them they have to do. They are the code enforcers for the government, whether it's the county, whether it's the state, and we haven't had a bit of problem, my daughter's building a house right now. It's been, they've been pretty amazing, believe it or not. You order up, uh, an inspection, believe it or not, they're there the next day. Ours are Tuesdays and Thursdays, the other half of the county is Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Uh, yeah, it, you know, cashless society, people wanna go to that, I don't wanna go to that. So if it's a check or money order, if that's the complaint you got, I don't think that's a real good complaint. Because, understand, it's government that drives PCI. PCI isn't there saying, we're making up all these rules, it's the government that's made up all these rules that they're enforcing, that they're, they're going out there and checking on. I'm not happy with all these codes that the state has, but they came in there and said, yep, you have to have this, this, and this, okay? So you come up with it, and it's good. Uh, they've been very professional the whole time through, since we started this process last November, I did want yous to know that. Uh, if you research, go into, talk to contractors, if you talk to somebody that's mad about a law that they're enforcing, government put that law in there for them to enforce. So you might wanna consider that before you start saying it's PCI's fault that they're enforcing something the government put in place. So.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, Mayor and Council comment, I'm gonna go first tonight. I had the pleasure this morning being on the radio with Dave McIntyre for about twenty minutes.
Oh, boy.
It was a hoot. Uh, I've known Dave McIntyre since I was seventeen years old. Dave's been on the radio for sixty-five years, uh, he's been the voice of the city of Hastings and the county for all those years. But I, I, I drew up a proclamation, I didn't, uh, present it tonight, because I presented to him this morning on the radio, and this is just a copy of what I, I said. I said, whereas in nineteen fifty-nine, Ken Ray Danton hired Dave McIntyre to be a broadcaster for WBCH Radio in Hastings, and whereas over the years, Dave has been, and has been seen and heard at many events around Hastings, Berry County. He would broadcast parades, he would broadcast from the Berry County Fair, the annual New Year's Drop Ball Drop downtown. Uh, he loved to walk in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Dave would be seen at Friday night high school football games. And whereas Dave served for years on the Hastings City Council representing the Third Ward, and, and as member of the Hastings Berry County Airport Board, he was instrumental in bringing a state police post to the city of Hastings. Whereas for years, Dave could be found at Richie's Coffee Shop or State Street Diner discussing all things, current events, politics, and especially weather, Dave took a lot of pride in his reporting of the weather. He had a lot of confidence in his accuracy predicting the weather. He would brag he was more accurate than television stations. Whereas Dave has been the voice of Berry County, Hastings City and Berry County, he has a genuine love and commitment to us all. Dave is one of the reasons that Hastings is one of the top one-hundred cities in America. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David J. Tassiva, Mayor of the city of Hastings, on behalf of the city of Hastings and city council, would hereby proclaim August eleventh, today, 2025, as Dave McIntyre Day, and I wish Dave a happy, well-deserved, uh, retirement.
That's very nice.
So, that's what we did for Dave McIntyre today, and, uh, you know, there, there's been years, you know, I, I raised three kids, you know, everybody sitting here can say the same thing, or maybe not Terry. We can all say that we sat at the radio at six o'clock every morning in the wintertime, listened to see what the weather was, you know, what the roads were like, and whether our kids were going to school or not. So we all grew up with Dave McIntyre, and I, I wanna thank him for service to our community. You know, he's been a real ambassador to the city of Hastings, and he's gonna be missed. Like I said, though, he's not going anywhere, he's gonna be around, and I'm sure you'll see him every day in Richie's Coffee Shop, so. Good luck, Dave, and well-deserved, uh, retirement. Any comments tonight, John?
No.
Terry?
I do now. Contrary to what Mayor Tassiva said, we used to listen to Dave McIntyre for the snow reports out there in the country. My mother had a crush on him, rest her, rest her soul, she would call into his radio show, uh, at six fifteen after the news, to call the Trading Post. And my mother would call in, and I remember she'd say whatever she's selling, uh, WI-52641. Why I remember that, I don't know, but my mother loved Dave McIntyre, and I'm sure she would've loved what you did for him today.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that, not your comment. That was it, thank you. Norman?
I wanna ask Terry, Stensel, did your mother try to sell you?
Several times, quiet.
No, I, I appreciate that for Dave McIntyre, he has been a stalwart in the community for these years, and, uh, uh, my wife stopped up and see them once in a while, and, uh, Lois and Dave are, are doing, doing well. And, uh, you know, they lost their daughter about, um, six months ago, Valerie died, and, um, but a, a great man, and thank you for doing that proclamation for them, I think it's well-deserved and appreciated.
Jordan?
I gotta jump on that train, but I, as the youngest person probably in this room, uh, I actually, anytime I saw Dave when I worked over at Fel Posh, he would recognize me, he'd greet me by name. The guy, his mind was just a steel trap, and good on ya.
Okay, Jackie?
Um, yes, thank you for what you did for Dave today, my dad was on the radio for several years with Dave in the morning. Um, so I knew him very well, uh, probably he knew me before I was even here. Um, so that was great. Uh, one thing I wanna do clarify about PCI is that I wasn't concerned with their code. That code is a Michigan-wide code that helps to ensure safety, and when things are built, that it's done in a crafted, specific way, which I have no idea about. My concern with them was customer service, because that's what we provide through them to our community. Um, it was about the way I was treated, it was about the way that my husband was treated, and I just don't want anybody to, to encounter that in the future. It wasn't about what PCI does or what their code is. I just wanna clarify that.
Anne, comments?
Um, same, ditto, and what you did for Dave, he's, he's always been Mr. WBCH. And we are all familiar with seeing, um, block, block the streets of Hastings, do his job.
John, any comments tonight?
Yes, sir, I, uh, appreciate what you did for Dave McIntyre, I've had the pleasure the last couple of years of having coffee with Dave just about every morning, and he's a great man, I love listening to his stories, which I'm gonna miss greatly. But thank you for what you did this morning, too.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, shout out to Dave, he's one of the first people I met when I moved here in nineteen eighty-seven, so, I've known him for all these years, and he is what matters. And anybody who can handle that day in and day out without, I don't know if Dave ever missed a day, quite honestly. I, it's an act, it's absolutely amazing to me that he could be as steady as he, as he is.
He was pretty dedicated to the community.
He's an icon, for sure.
He, on his, uh, when we were talking this morning, he, he, he really appreciates our police department, fire department, and everybody in the city that goes the extra mile to do what we do, so. And I, I appreciate you all thanking me for that, I, I did it for him, it's, it's not about, never about me, so, but I appreciate it. Uh, any, anything else come before the council? Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by McLean, supported by Stensel Barton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same? Adjourn, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
You know, that's the quietest I've seen Dale all year.
I know, right?